Good evening. I'd like to call the twenty second meeting of the mayor and city council on Monday, January ninth, two thousand twenty-three to order at six P M. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mister President. Councilman Deloitte?
Here.
Councilman Cole?
Present.
Councilman Sednor? Councilman Mitchell?
President.
Smith?
Here.
Mayor Mo?
Here.
Right. Agenda item three is approval of minutes of the work session on October fifth, two thousand twenty-two. The eighteenth meeting on October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, the nineteenth meeting on October.
Mister President?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, um, we will only have the minutes for October. We don't have any ready for November. I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, thank you. And so for the, again, the nineteenth meeting on October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Um, does anyone have any corrections or amendments to the minutes? If not, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister President, I had asked the clerk earlier, are the minutes from the nineteenth meeting on the twenty-fourth, are those complete?
Um, I'll have to double check those. Um, I received them from Ms. Rao. Uh, I didn't get a chance to review all of them, uh, but I'll double check that and get with her, um, to make sure.
There were some, uh, areas in the, at the end of the minutes that looked like there were blanks.
Okay.
Mister President, I'll motion that we approve the minutes from the work session on October fifth and the eighteenth meeting on October twelfth.
All right. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Deloitte?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell? President Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Mo?
I, I don't vote on these. Thank you.
All right. Agenda item four is a report of the mayor and city council, and I'll start with Councilman DeWol.
Happy New Year, everyone. Uh, uh, my sincere condolences go out to the, uh, Capino family. Mike, we knew him as Harry. He was a police officer for the city of Laurel. He retired as a police officer for the city of Laurel. Uh, I was notified by his son that, uh, on Sunday morning, he died in his sleep. Uh, uh, it was a pleasure to know Mike and to work with Mike as a police officer for the city and all the, the things that he accomplished and all the things he did for our city. He'll be sorely missed. Uh, we have two more days left for Laurel Elementary School and the Brighter Bytes Program. Uh, uh, January nineteenth and February second, this is where, uh, families of the Laurel Elementary School students get a overstuffed. When I say overstuffed, it's a, it's a large bag of fruits, fresh fruits and vegetables to help, uh, educate kids on the, uh, the benefits of eating healthy. And, uh, let's see, the, uh, uh, in the Old Town, uh, if you're not aware of it, they have, uh, I believe it's five or six, I'm not sure, of the history of the Epiphany Parties, but they have, they happen in Old Town Laurel, and it's always a pleasure going there with lots of good home-cooked, uh, ideas that people bring to the parties, and it's a great, it's a great event to, uh, uh, get to see everybody and to share, uh, food and drink with them. And that's all I have to report tonight, President.
Thank you, Councilman DeWol. Um, Councilman Cole?
Good evening, everyone. Um, on the fourteenth of December, I attended the, uh, last Pride meeting of the year. On the sixteenth, thank you to Parks and Rec and Public Works for inviting me to their holiday parties. Both of those were well-attended, and I had a great time at the Parks and Rec event at the end of the evening. Um, on the twentieth, I attended the Historic District Commission, and on the twenty-first, I attended B-City, uh, subcommittee meeting. Um, want to remind everybody that there are always openings on city commissions. Right now, I know that there are openings on the Pride Committee and on the Environmental Affairs Committee, so if somebody is interested in joining those, they can submit their resume to me or to the mayor. That is all I have, Mister President.
Thank you, Councilman Cole. Um, Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you. Greetings. Happy, happy New Year's, everyone. Um, on, uh, December seventeenth, uh, I hosted the Second Annual Toy Drive at, uh, the Laurel Boys and Girls Club. Um, and I was joined by, um, uh, Deputy Chief Pazinski, uh, who bought, uh, hot chocolate for, uh, all the kids and parents. Uh, so we definitely thank him and, and all the sponsors. Uh, that day, we had the Clean Sleep, um, Expungement Clinic. And so we were able to help, uh, a couple more people expunge their, um, record for the New Year. Uh, on the twenty-eighth, um, we gave away, uh, fifty pre-packed meals, uh, from the Food Bank, uh, sponsored by Oppling LLC and, uh, Carib Express, uh, on Main Street. Uh, on the twenty-third, I was able to, um, party with the seniors at Selbourn House. We had an ugly sweater party. Uh, and, and we're joined by, uh, High Five Ice Cream and, uh, Hemp Haven. On, uh, January third, I went to Gwen Ivy's, uh, open house, uh, event at the Capitol. Uh, on the third, I went to, uh, State's Attorney Ivan Bates' celebration at MMT Stadium in Baltimore. Uh, on the fifth, I attended, uh, the W S S C, uh, disparity study, uh, where they gave the results um, of, of their study, and I was right there on Switzer Lane. Um, on, uh, the eighth, I went to the soft opening of Soft and Floyd Boutique, which is, uh, a new Laurel business. So it's, uh, Jane, Jane Preston is his second business on Main Street, and it's right there on C Street. And then, uh, um, earlier today, I went to, uh, a, a rent strike. Um, that was, uh, went to support a rent strike that was happening, uh, in Blatonsburg, uh, with some of the, 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 the council colleagues um, from the county, and, uh, was definitely encouraged to hear that they have, uh, a bill that they'll be putting forth tomorrow, so definitely be watching that one. And then, uh, this weekend for M O K Sunday, I'm doing a Fair Housing Symposium and Resource Fair at, uh, Local Twenty-four, uh, and that is the conclusion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, um, Councilman Mitchell, or Mayor Mo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as you heard, we were notified, uh, this afternoon of the passing of, uh, Corporal Harry Mike Pino passed away, uh, yesterday. Corporal Capino served twenty years with the Laurel Police Department, retiring in March the thirty-first, March thirty-first of nineteen eighty-nine. The city flag will be flown at half-staff starting tomorrow, uh, in his memory and his dedication to his service to the community and the Laurel Police Department. Uh, right now, we have no other details, but when we get those, make sure that we put that out to the public as well. Did have the opportunity to attend the, uh, Washington Council of Government, uh, Board of Directors meeting as well as, um, I want to thank Morningside for inviting me and, and allowing me the opportunity to acknowledge those ninety-year-olds, and we even had a hundred-year-old, uh, senior at, uh, Morningside, so appreciate of being with them and, and glad to be able to honor them as well. Um, on the, uh, December the fifteenth, the city of, uh, Laurel Police Department did have their promotional ceremony. Uh, that information was put out as well on, uh, press release of those officers. Want to congratulate each of them and thank them. And then on the seventeenth, Reeves Across America, the Ivy Hill Cemetery was, was held as well. Um, let me also, today is, uh, happy, let me, uh, is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so want to acknowledge and thank all of our law enforcement, um, for, uh, all their work and their service they provide to the community. On June, uh, January the thirteenth, the Memorial Reef Ceremony, um, will take place here at the Doc, Dr. Martin Luther King uh, memorial site here at Ivy Hill. Public is, um, invited, uh, starts at four P M. It's not a long ceremony, but it's really put on by the employees, and we've opened it up, uh, to the general public as well, we've done in the prior year. Also part of their, our official, uh, Martin Luther King events, uh, will be on January the sixteenth, which will be our National Day of Service event at Laurel Municipal Center, starting at ten A M until twelve noon, and we encourage you to, to stop by. The, uh, city offices on January the sixteenth, uh, will be closed and observant to Martin Luther King Day as well. Let me also, um, just take this opportunity, um, to acknowledge today is, uh, Marcus' birthday. Uh, Marcus was born on January the ninth, uh, nineteen eighty-seven. He was a lifelong resident uh, who started working here in the city of Laurel on June the sixteenth, two thousand and three, uh, in the Department of Park and Recreation as a summer auxiliary. Uh, then he moved over, uh, to where his father, Brent, um, uh, works as well, and he is in Department of Public Works, and, uh, that's where he moved over to in September the nineteenth, two thousand and five. He served in that capacity until he was killed in the line of service on Jan-, uh, January the twenty-third, twenty seventeen. Um, he was thirty years old. We said we would not forget Marcus. We won't forget Marcus, um, and his memorial stands out front, uh, where we honor that each and every day we come to, um, to work here. So I just wanted to acknowledge that since today is his birthday. I did have the opportunity to talk to Ralph Brent, his father, uh, today, and, uh, let him know what I was gonna say, as I always do, and, um, he appreciated that, appreciate that we remembered, uh, Marcus. Um, Mister President, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, for my report, I won't go over every single one, but I, we, we did do a toy drive, um, which we were able to serve, uh, over five hundred kids between the Prince George's Hospital and Baltimore. Um, as well as I attended Mayor Bowser of D C's inaugural ball for New Years and several holiday parties for the city of Laurel. I, I also want to, um, say I appreciate the Laurel Police. As the mayor said, it's the least appreciation day. I just want to say thank you for all you guys do here. Um, the community is better because of you. And, um, over the weekend, I attended a rally, um, on accident when I was walking by the, the Washington, uh, Lincoln Memorial. And it dawned on me, I mean, I've seen in the news a little bit here and there, but, uh, I, I met some people who live here in Laurel, and, uh, they asked me to, you know, say something on the behalf, and when I was there, and I just want to say I stand in solidarity with, um, Iranian, Iranian-Americans who have loved ones over there in Iran and, uh, are looking for justice over there of a, a good democracy. Um, often, we are in our bubbles, and we don't think about what's going on outside of, you know, our country, our community. And I, I do want to say I stand with you, and, um, we're hoping, you know, something can come to a resolution over there. Uh, I urge you just write your congressmen and your senators and, um, our appraiser with your families. On that note, I'd just like to end with a Happy New Year to everyone, and, uh, no, is the conclusion of my report. Um, our next agenda item is, uh, mayoral appointment, um, and Mister Mayor, you can have the floor.
You have my letter. Who is it on my point? Got to get my letter. Hold, hold tight, Mr. President. I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, Mister President, we do have a, uh, uh, make a following appointment of Ronald B. Rendell, uh, to the Board of Trustees. Um, and that will be effective on one nine twenty-three of, and until one nine of twenty-seven, and I'd ask for the concurrence of the count. Thank you, Mister President. Sorry for the delay.
No problem, Mister Mayor. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we appoint, uh, Ron Rendell, uh, to the retirement board.
And can I get a second?
I'll second, Mister President.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Deloitte?
Just, uh, uh, Mister President, if, if you would, uh, uh, I met Ron uh, in two thousand and twelve when he became a treasurer for the, uh, Laurel Lions Club, and, uh, um, he's a great person, very knowledgeable, uh, several degrees from University of Maryland, and he works over, uh, I know the office used to be, it's a, a, uh, investment company over at, uh, um, the Tux and Greens. And I got to know him and his wife Jackie very, very well, and he's a, a super person. He's great in our community. He's originally from Baltimore and now, uh, resides in Laurel for a long time, and I would highly recommend him, and I vote yes.
Uh, Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes. Right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next agenda item is, is the general public hearing. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed to speak?
Yes, Mister President, we have three people signed up to speak.
All right. Thank you. I will open the general public hearing at six sixteen P M. Um, please note that each speaker is limited to three minutes, and I have a list of them right here. And first, I have Akeia Jefferson, signed to speak. Miss Jefferson, please state your name and your address for the record.
Hi, my name is Akeia Jefferson, and my address for the record is five eighty-five Main Street, Huck Tuxsome Place, Laurel, Maryland.
You have the floor.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Um, I just wanted to, I'm here today to really just reiterate the need for rent stabilization. Just wanted to refresh everyone after the holiday season that we're still here. I know these things take time. Um, we appreciate, you know, all your thought and, and mind behind this, but time is really ticking. Um, just to refresh everyone's memory, I got hit with the eight hundred dollar increase. I had a twenty-three-day notice. I did take a deal for two hundred dollars more a month, but there are people that are rent-striking right now for less than two hundred dollars a month. That's still a lot of money. Unable to really participate in a lot of things I normally participate in. No toy drives, no donation to my church that I normally do at the end of the year. It's a lot of money. So the rent stabilization would really help us have some type of security, like we have no idea. I'm scared to check my email. So I'm like six months into my lease. I know a lot of people have a little bit more time, a little less time, but we really need to not reward bad behavior of some landlords that think that, that this is okay. So I'm just asking for some empathy and some serious thought as we hopefully can come to some type of agreement on rent stabilization. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Jefferson. Next, I have, uh, Troy Griffiths. Uh, Mister Griffiths, please state your name and address as well for the record, and you have the floor. You have three minutes. Is there Mister Griffiths, Troy Griffiths? All right. I'll move on to the last person. I have Miss Ruth Walls.
Mister President, I'm sorry. Uh, he, I think he is here. Um, the name wasn't showing up. Let me see. Mister Griffiths?
I'm here. I'm here. Can I hear, can y'all hear me?
Yeah. Yes.
That's weird. I don't know why that came.
State your name and, um, address for the record, and then you have the floor.
Um, uh, Troy Griffiths, uh, ninety-four eighty-three Merkirk Road, uh, Laurel, Maryland. Uh, and do you need the zip code? Stupid question. Hear me?
That's fine, Mister Griffiths. I have it.
Okay, cool, cool. Um, I, I was actually going to talk about, um, an article in the Washington Post, Starwood Tended Struggle Amid Growing Crisis for Renters, but I heard Dr. King's name come up, and nothing brings me joy more when people mention his name, uh, but don't follow through with his actions. So I'm gonna scrap that. I'm gonna say, um, to lead, uh, direct you to a speech he gave. The title of the speech is Remain in a Weight Through a Great Revolution at the National Cathedral on March thirty-first, nineteen sixty-eight. And in that speech, he said, "There's another thing closely related to racism that I would like to mention as another challenge." Um, "We are challenged to rid our nation and the world of poverty. Like a monstrous octopus, poverty spread this nagging prehensile tentacle, tentacles into hamlets and villages all, all over our world. Two-thirds of the people of the world go to bed hungry tonight. They're ill-housed." I'll repeat, "They are ill-housed. They are ill-nourished. They are shabbily clad." I've seen in Latin America. I've seen it in Africa. I've seen this poverty in Asia. Um, so that ends what he says, and the quote, right? And, um, this isn't hard. You mentioned his name, followed through on his actions, uh, the, you know, the mayor mentioned, uh, the staff is holding an event. Um, stop whitewashing Dr. King. Stop playing like he was this, you know, um, soft go-about dude, and if you're gonna say his name, live in his action, uh, do what's right, rent stabilization, um, you know, th- this is a poverty issue. This can be solved. It's not that hard. Um, you know, you can just go ahead and make this happen. And the article I told you about, uh, this is happening in Florida where a, for, a billionaire, Barry Sternlake, four-point-six billion dollars. He owns the majority of the properties down there, and he's complaining about, um, trying to meet budget. He was on CNBC complaining about, uh, interest rates being over three percent. Um, if, if a billionaire could complain about interest rates going over three percent, imagine people who are receiving eight hundred, a thousand dollars. So do what's right, man. Stop using Dr. King name and thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Griffith. Uh, the last person we have assigned to speak is Miss Ruth Walls. Uh, Miss Walls, please state your name and address for the record, and you have the floor.
Mister President, I don't see Miss Walls, uh, in, in the room.
Okay. Well, all right, we'll move on, and so I will close the general public hearing at six twenty-two P M. Right. Next agenda item is agenda, is, uh, agenda item seven, introduction in first public hearing of an ordinance, number two thousand and three, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, amending the Laurel City Code, Chapter sixteen, taxation, Article one, to amend Section sixteen dash ten, elderly and veteran tax credit program into providing effective date. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. This item was discussed at the January fourth, two thousand twenty-three, um, work session. Director Saylor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mister President. Um, yes, as you said, we've discussed this at the November and the January work sessions. This would be a change to ordinance number nineteen twenty-seven in that it would decrease the minimum years of living in your property um, from forty to ten. It would increase the maximum assessments from three hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand. It would increase the credit itself to twenty percent from ten percent. It would include surviving spouses, and it does include, um, active duty or retired military regardless of age, um, if they have a service-related disability. I can answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Um, any questions or comments from the council? All right. Madam Clerk, is there anyone assigned to speak on this item?
No, Mister President, we don't have anyone signed up to speak.
All right. Well, I'll open the public hearing at six twenty-four, and I'll close the public hearing on this at six twenty-four P M. All right.
Mister President, could I just ask, uh, Michelle just one quick question while she's here?
Sure.
Michelle, when, uh, when we finally approve this, what'll be the effective date on it immediately?
That is my understanding, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman DeWol. All right. The second public hearing with possible action will be at the mayor and city council meeting on Monday, January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. The next agenda item is agenda item eight, introduction in first public hearing on an ordinance number two thousand and four, M X T Concept Site Plan, number nine three five, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, to approve mixed-use transportation-oriented development. Develop a three hundred-two residential units corridor center community at the property is known as six eight two zero, six nine zero zero, six nine zero two, six nine two zero Conti Road in one five two zero three Pirate Lane, Laurel, Maryland, two, two zero seven zero seven, submitted by Oak Home Company, uh, L L C, and providing an effective date. I read the title into the record for the first reading. This item was discussed at the January fourth, two thousand twenty-three work session. Deputy Director Burrow, you have the floor.
Thank you, and good evening, Mister President, Mayor, and City Councilman, and Happy New Year to each and every one of you. Again, this is, uh, Monte Burrow Deputy Director Economic and Community Development. At the previous work session before you is M X T Concept Site Plan Application Number nine three five, Ordinance Number two thousand and four, as required by the city of Laurel. as required by the City of Laurel Code providing legislation to approve a concept plan to develop three hundred and two residential units at a property is known as six eight two zero, sixty-nine hundred, sixty-nine zero two, sixty-nine twenty, Conti Road and fifteen two oh three Pirate Lane, Laurel, Maryland, two zero seven, zero seven. The applicant is seeking M X T site, concept plan approval to develop three hundred and two resident units. The total amount of land to be developed is approximately twenty-eight point twenty-four plus acres. The applicant and their team is on the call for a small presentation and to answer questions from the previous work session. Thank you.
Miss Green, uh, Madam Clerk, is there anyone assigned to speak on this?
Yes, sir, we have one person sign up to speak.
All right, I will open the public hearing at six twenty-seven P M. Uh, please note that each speaker is limited again to three minutes. And, uh, oh, I do have listed here, I have Mr. Ed Gibbs signed in to speak. Uh, Mr. Gibbs, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening, uh, President Smith, uh, Mayor Mo, and, uh, members of the City Council, Edward Gibbs, uh, an attorney with.
Sorry, Mr. Gibbs, you don't have three minutes. You have, you 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 can have some time to, um, explain. I didn't realize, thought you were, uh, constituent speaking on.
Yeah, that's quite all right, but, uh, so, uh, everyone, once again, uh, nice to see everyone be here this evening. I represent, um, Polty Home Company. Uh, the applicant in this case, uh, which is wholly owned by, uh, Polty Group Incorporated. Polty, of course, is a, uh, longtime residential home builder in the United States. Uh, I'd like to, um, introduce the members of our team who are here this evening. Uh, Mr. David DiMarco, on behalf of Polty, and, uh, he is the Vice President in charge of land acquisitions in the Mid-Atlantic region. Uh, Mr. Ken Dunn, our civil engineer from Soltes, and Mr. Wes Dunker, uh, he is a transportation engineer. Uh, transportation is not really an issue in this case, but, um, uh, but wanted to have him on in case there were any questions. So he is with Traffic Group. So those are the folks that we have on. There are other folks associated, uh, with Polty, uh, but I won't go, uh, through the entire list. Um, let me just say that we gave, I, what I thought and hoped was a rather thorough, uh, explanation of the project uh, last, uh, last week on January fourth at the work session, and I'm not planning to be as detailed as that this time around. Um, I'd just like to say that, uh, Polty is, uh, you know, very pleased and happy uh, to be, uh, pursuing this approval within the city of Laurel. Uh, they're excited about the prospect to, uh, develop one of their communities within the municipal limits of the city. Um, this particular property again is twenty-eight point two four acres. Uh, it's rather isolated, quite frankly, uh, in the city in that it is, uh, up in the northeast quadrant, uh, of the intersection of I ninety-five, um, and, uh, Maryland one ninety-eight. Uh, and of course, it's bounded on, uh, three sides really by, uh, the off-ramp uh, to one ninety-eight from I ninety-five. And, uh, then, of course, there are substantial, uh, land areas to the south and to the east. Uh, access would be off of Conti Road at Pirate Lane. Um, and the proposal here, yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mr. DiMarco is helping me out here. This is a vicinity map, uh, which shows you the, uh, corridor center is what we call this project. It is, uh, uh, outlined in yellow, uh, on the map with a star in the middle. As you can see, the, uh, shape, uh, along the west and northwest sort of contours with the, uh, with the off-ramp on the one ninety-eight, and then the southern and eastern boundaries are regular straight and shape. And so you will see, uh, you will see the access that is composed off of Conti Road at Pirate Lane. And, um, and then beneath that, of course, is Terryland. So, as I said, uh, you know, you can see from looking at the map, the property is rather isolated. Uh, it is zone M X T. The proposal, uh, is to develop a three hundred, uh, two, uh, home residential community that would consist of one hundred and forty-four stacked condominium townhomes. Uh, this is the concept plan that you see on the screen right now. Uh, the access coming in off Pirate Lane. Again, there would be a hundred and forty-four stacked condominium townhomes, twelve live-work units, which are shown in pink, um, or salmon colored on the drawing, uh, one hundred and thirty, uh, two regular townhomes, and then fourteen villa homes appear as the, uh, yellow shaded units along the far eastern valley. Um, we plan to have a heavily amenitized, uh, community, uh, which will include a community center, uh, pool, playground, uh, and then an extensive, uh, pedestrian trail system to the community as well as, uh, obviously sidewalks along the interior roads. The roads themselves will be private, uh, maintained, um, by the homeowners association, uh, once that is cleared. Um, everything that we're proposing to do is permitted as a matter of right in the M X T zone. Uh, we believe that we demonstrated through our plan and, uh, in our justification statement that all of the criteria for the grant of a conceptual site plan approval are met satisfied in this, uh, in this situation. Uh, we conform with the, uh, two thousand seventeen master plan, uh, through the city. Um, and, uh, and so, you know, I thi- I think that's really all I'm gonna say at this point. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but we are in conformance with the city code and city master plan. Uses are permitted as a matter of right. Uh, the live-work units are very, uh, unique, but yet something that is, uh, becoming very, very popular, uh, even before the pandemic, but more so after the folks wanting the opportunity to, uh, use part of their home officially for, uh, a workplace. And, uh, that's exactly what we'll be having here. Uh, there were some questions at the work session, uh, because my client is proposing, uh, to offer and by the way, all these units are for sale. Be simple, uh, unit, uh, for sale, no rentals. Um, my client is proposing to offer, uh, some workforce housing, uh, eleven total townhomes, and then eleven, uh, townhomes for moderate income, uh, sale. And I would like to ask Mr., there was a question about what those actual sale prices might be. Uh, obviously, they're gonna change as this gonna take time to bring this to the marketplace, but I'd like to ask Mr. DiMarco to explain what that pricing index would look like, uh, based upon today's, uh, figure. So, Mr. DiMarco, if you could join in, that would be great.
Thank you, Ed. I appreciate that. David DiMarco, Vice President of Polty Homes, uh, in Fairfax, Virginia. We, um, had some discussion about how we did affordable and workforce housing units in other jurisdictions last time. I I think it was, uh, Councilman Mitchell that requested to know the numbers behind the percentages. You know, the, it's based on percentages of median income, median household income, and usually
Recording in progress.
And usually for the moderate income, uh, you know, it could be anywhere between seventy and eighty percent of median income, and for the workforce housing, that's like a step up. People that make too much money to qualify for affordable, but not enough to afford market rate. And that typically goes from a hundred to a hundred and twenty percent of median income. And I kind of went through the math on what that would mean for this project. As Ed said, we have, uh, in the, in the moderate income category, we have eleven condominiums, uh, lower-level condominiums, five we put at seventy percent of median income. And that means the average base price for the home will be a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And we, and that is, uh, that home would be no different than the home next to it. You wouldn't be able to ascertain any difference from the exterior. It'll look just like the rest of the community. Some of the specs inside are lower specs, uh, you know, uh, than you would find, uh, optioned in the market rate units. But from the exterior, you wouldn't know any difference. Um, and then we had six units that we were proposing at eighty percent of median income, and that means an average base price of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for those homes. So that sat, that's how we propose to address the eleven moderate income. Now, the step up, which is the workforce housing, we propose those to be in eleven of our sixteen-foot townhomes. Again, same thing with the exteriors. You won't know the difference between the, uh, workforce housing and the market rate housing, but the interior spec level again may be different. At a hundred percent of the median income, those homes will be able to sell for two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And that's what we're proposing for five of the units. For the other six units, we're proposing maybe, uh, the cap of a hundred and twenty percent of median income, which is three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So I apologize for the long-winded explanation, but I did want to address the question that was raised at our last meeting.
Thank you very much, David. I appreciate that. And, um, Mr. President, uh, with that being said, we, uh, we're happy to respond to any questions anyway.
Oh, any questions or comments from the council?
Mr. President, I have a question or two.
Go ahead, Mr. Duell, on Councilman Duell.
Thank you. Uh, I, I like the fact that these are, uh, these are gonna be, uh, homes that are for sale and not for rent. I want to address this to Mr. Gibbs and, uh, Mr. DiMarco. What's gonna stop? I see the trend now over the nation is, and we have it close by, is, uh, predatory landlords or predatory corporations coming in and buying, uh, places and then doing some reasonable, uh, up upgrades with them and then jacking the price up, which we heard, uh, Kim Jefferson explain what they're doing over the Tuxton Place. Uh, and and her increase was eight hundred dollars. So what's gonna stop, uh, a corporation or a landlord from coming in and purchasing? You're looking at, uh, eleven work unit, uh, and then a lot of eleven affordable, uh, moderate, affordable housing units. What's gonna stop a corporation from coming in and purchasing all eleven of those and, uh, make them into rental?
Uh, I'm happy to fill that, sir. Um, this is David DiMarco with Polty Homes again. This will be, and I, and I know we have a lot of work to do here, because other jurisdictions already have, uh, the ordinance in place. And those, that type of purchaser will not be able to purchase these units. You will have to demonstrate typically how it works in other jurisdictions is they actually have a list of people who are on the list that qualify. So you won't be able to purchase it unless your household income is no more than seventy percent. And so there is a qualification that will ha- that will be developed, and it'll be recorded uh, in the land records so that those units can't, you know, somebody can't qualify to buy them and then sell them down, you know, a year later for five hundred thousand dollars. The price will be fixed, just and just like we're talking about, there's standard escalation that can occur, but there, but they will always be affordable housing for a period of, you know, twenty-five to thirty-five years, whatever, you know, we choose to establish.
So, Mr. DiMarco, does that have to be, uh, uh, done through the city, or you, will you be doing that based upon, uh, your, uh, your expectations or things like that? That that the verbiage of that would come, uh, through the council? Or would it be, uh, you guys actually doing it?
We're, we're actually open to to either way. Um, we can take care of it as we have the models in other jurisdictions, or we can assist the city in developing a model so that this can be used elsewhere and they can administer it. It's really up to your preference, but we have the ability to establish it and mod- enter it through the, and through recorded documents on those specific units, which we will identify.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Duell. Any, any other comments or questions from the council? All right, well, thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Um, the second public hearing, uh, on this, sorry, I'll close the public hearing at six forty-one P M. Did open it. But the second public hearing with possible action will be at the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, at six P M. Last agenda item is, uh, residue, sorry?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We appreciate your time. Any questions, you all know how to get ahold of us.
Will do. All right, uh, before I move to the, the next agenda item, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, alerted me that Ruth Walls is here, so I'm, I'm gonna open the public hearing one more time, with six four, at six forty-one P M. Allow Ms. Wall to speak. She'll have three minutes, and just please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, um, good evening. Um, this is Ruth Walls. Uh, thank you for letting me speak here. I'm sorry, I had a problem with the link earlier and I couldn't get in. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I I just want to piggyback on to the issue with the high rents, and I was looking today and I found a statistic which said for every hundred dollar increase in the median rent, it's associated with a nine percent increase in the estimated homelessness rate. And this was a twenty-twenty report by the U S Government Accountability Office. And, you know, I actually woke up in the middle of the night last night thinking about these rent increases, and I just felt really upset thinking about it, and I wanted to ask each council member and the mayor to think about the person that they care about the most in their life. You know, for some people, it might be their mother, for others could be somebody else. And I want you to put that person in a situation where they got an eight hundred dollar rent increase. And I would like you to tell me if you think that's okay. Because I just don't think that you would. I mean, I think if we can humanize this and make it personal, that everybody's gonna be on board with some type of rent cap. I mean, this is just not right. It's cruel, it's inhumane, it's not civil. And that's not what Laurel's about. We need to have a caring town. We do in so many ways. I mean, let's be part of a solution for this. And it's not all about the landlords. You know, they get, um, tax write-offs for things they do. You know, do they get tax increases? I don't know. I'm not educated about that. I don't know. But something isn't right here, and we need to personalize this and have feelings and empathy about this. I just don't think that anyone sitting up there would say, yes, it would be okay. I just don't. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Walls. All right, um, our last agenda item is, uh, Resolution Number one dash two zero two three, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to establish a bicycle and pedestrian ci- citizens advisory committee. I have read the title into the record for the first reading. This item was discussed at the January, January fourth, two thousand twenty-three work session. Mayor Mo, you have the floor.
I don't have anything further, Mr. President, besides, uh,
All right.
Thank you very much.
Um, well, Madam Clerk, is there anyone assigned to speak on this item?
No, Mr. President.
All right, well, I'll open and close the public hearing at six forty-five P M. And, uh, I don't have any comments on this, so any questions or comments from the council on this? No. All right, um, I'll just make a brief statement regarding the affordable housing. Uh, I did ask for comments from the council, um, and I've received comments. We will, um, I will meet with the, um, administration uh, soon, in the near future. And we're with the request of what the council is looking for. And, um, of course, if you remember, we talked about a study. We talked about some other things, um, so we're gonna sit down and I'm going to bring those concerns to them, and then we're gonna have a meeting and go from there, and you'll hear from us, um, in the near future. With that being said, there being no further business to come. Oh, sorry, um, the second public hearing with possible action will be at the Mayor City Council meeting on Monday, January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, at six P M, and that's on the the bicycle pedestrian. the Bicycle Pedestrians Citizens Advisory Committee. But with that being said, uh, there are no further business to come before the mayor and city council, uh, this meeting is adjourned.